Good evening. I will call the Missoula City Council meeting for September 18th to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'll note tonight that all members are present with the exception of Ms. Vasika. I'm sorry, she's remote tonight, I apologize.
I'm present.
Yep, so thank you, Ms. Vasika, all members are present. We have minutes to approve from September 11th. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, those will stand approved. Any public comment on non-agenda items? So this is something, so if it's not on our agenda, if it is on our agenda, we'll take that up at a later time. If it's not on the agenda, you're welcome to come on up. Couple of ground rules, we ask that you keep your comments respectful and keep them on topic and that you keep them to three minutes or less. And also, if you'd please give us your name and spell your last name for the record. It's Green.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Eric Green. That's green like the color with an E on the end. And I'm a wildlife biologist and tonight I'd like to make just a few remarks about the really important riparian habitats along the Bitterroot River out near Fort Missoula. I've studied wildlife and riparian habitats in Montana for over 30 years. And by riparian, I just mean habitats that are next to rivers, creeks, wetlands. The stretch of the Bitterroot River at Fort Missoula contains some of the best cottonwood and ponderosa pine riparian forests remaining in Missoula, especially in the rapidly growing south side of town. Last week Marilyn Marler passed out land ownership maps of this area and a habitat map. And I brought those along because I know maybe some of you didn't get them and I'll leave them up here so you can grab them if you didn't get copies. The riparian forest at Fort Missoula is a critical east-west wildlife corridor. It allows wildlife to move between the Sapphire Mountains and the Bitterroot Mountains. And this area is also a biodiversity hotspot. And let me calibrate this for you. There's been more than 240 species of birds that have been recorded along this short stretch of river and adjacent areas. And this is more than 50% of all the bird species that have ever been recorded in Montana. So 50% have been recorded in this really small area. Over a dozen of these species have high conservation priority. For example, Lewis's woodpecker, which is very common at Fort Missoula, is declining precipitously throughout the rest of its range. And it's been listed by the state as a species of special conservation concern. And this has led to the recognition of this important bird area as one of, quote, "continental significance." Let me say that again because it blew my mind. But this area at Fort Missoula, these riparian forests have been listed as of continental importance, significance. During the spring and fall migrations, Fort Missoula ponds and adjacent Bitterroot River are critical stopover sites for thousands of more than 32 species of waterfowl. Scientific research on the effects of development near riparian areas recommends that setbacks should be about 300 to 400 feet. Setbacks of at least 100 to 150 feet are recommended for many migrant birds. The Missouli County Riparian Resource Protection zoning regulations stipulate a 400-point sit along the Bitterroot River. On the habitat map, I've shown with a star the location of the proposed townhouse developments at post-hospital at Fort Missoula. And those buildings would be within about 30 feet or so of the riparian habitat at Slavens Island. The riparian habitat at Fort Missoula is a natural gem. All the pieces for a world-class natural area are there right now. We just have to make sure we don't mess it up. There are many competing uses for the land at Fort Missoula, but I urge you to consider protecting the immense natural values of this very special stretch of the river. We can do this while still developing a thriving multiple-use area. And I want to thank you for everything you all do. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
And I'll leave these up here.
Great, thank you. Anyone else tonight with general public comments? Mr. Hunt?
Good evening, my name is Kevin Hunt, I live in Ward 1. Before I commence, Mayor Hess, I wanted to thank you for your service to the city for running a very clean and ethical campaign and for not taking your eye off the ball while the city was facing major problems and you were running for election. I really appreciate it, I'm sure all people in Missoula appreciate it as well, so thank you. I'm here just to talk about something that you've witnessed several times and that's when I, for one, have come up here and I recently got a medical reason for why this has been happening, but in any event, you've watched me pass out here or have syncope. And this is due to a condition I have and but the condition I have is kind of rare and there's probably only 40 people in Missoula statistically that have it, but there's a lot of other people who for various reasons either should not or cannot stand while they come up to make a public comment. And I discussed this with one member of the council and I was quite satisfied with the response, so I'm going to suggest this to you. We have a lot of people come in and maybe it's their first time even speaking. A lot of people have, are self-conscious about speaking in the first place. Even more so, imagine if they come in and, you know, they have a challenge, you know, maybe that will, maybe they're in quadriplegic, someone has to help them, have to come up, it's just, the other thing is the amount of time it wastes in a meeting. So this is my suggestion. And it should not require anybody with one of these conditions to call a day or two in advance and request an accommodation. This is just a matter of common public decency. I've seen it every other city council, every one I've ever testified in front of. And that is this, my suggestion is that at each meeting, you have, one, preferably, two chairs here at this table, two chairs at this table. We have an adjustable microphone. That way, if someone wants to stand, they can stand. If they need to sit, they can sit, but it does something else, too. If you have two people waiting here, now you don't wait for one person to finish his remarks and maybe have the courtesy of being allowed a few extra seconds and then sit down and then another person walking up here. You add that up over the course of a meeting when you have maybe 50 people in here who want to speak and I guarantee it's going to take a lot of time. So my suggestion is, this is really nothing to debate about. It's nothing to, because this is housekeeping administrative measure, so I'm asking the mayor and the president of the council to make this very simple change in accommodations so that committee meeting days and meeting nights, there's two chairs here and that won't speed things up and it will accommodate and honor and respect and the dignity of our citizens who wish to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Dr. Lane?
City Council Mayor, thank you. Sarah Lane, L-A-N-E. I'm here to talk as a bicyclist. I live in the U District and I commute on my bicycle when I can. And it's become quite hazardous and I'm here to point out, if you don't witness this, there's lots of people who run red lights. And there are, yeah, it's just like people cruising through the light, but you have to not trust that they've stopped. I have a request that you label the Bear Tracks Bridge with a bicycle lane so that we know. An elderly woman on a walk stopped me the other day and said, I don't know where to walk. And I said, yeah, I know, but it is for bicycles and pedestrians, but it's not clear once you're on the bridge or to tourists or to all the people. That would be an easy fix. A request to enforce traffic breakers. And the other big thing is car bicycle rules. People don't know, car drivers don't know how to treat a bicyclist. Bicyclists don't know how to yield to a car. And cars are stopping for a bicycle in the middle of Brook Street, for example, and we don't have the right of way. I don't, I mean, my bicycle rules came from 1960-something, so I think we all need an update. On, I was thinking maybe a major page in the Missoulian or an educational effort to tell bicycles how they should behave and tell drivers who has the right of way. And another thing would be motorized bicycles. Should they be on the bike path? I have a question about that. There's these big chunky bikes that you don't actually have to pedal that can go pretty fast and they're on the bike lane as well. So just a question on that. Those are my issues, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lane, thanks for coming tonight. Ms. McGee?
Hi, Dawn McGee. I've spoken to many of you about this issue before, but I'm here to echo what Dr. Lane has said. There was a hit-and-run accident that killed someone here this week. And what I have observed as a bicyclist who, I ride my bike every day from my house on Woodford Street to my office on Alder. People run red lights like it's just nothing, like there's not even a pause. Yellow doesn't mean slow down, red doesn't mean stop. And we have no police presence policing this. And I think the traffic has gotten so out of hand and people are speeding. When I came home from River City Roots Festival early, the last night of the festival, there were people driving over the Higgins Street Bridge at more than 100 miles an hour. It was terrifying. And I think unless we put some motorcycle cops and cops on and regularly ticket for a while to dissuade the behavior, we're going to see more hit-and-runs. I went through and looked through the police blotter for this past week and I saw more hit-and-run incidences than I did DUIs in this town. So we have a real issue and I had said to a couple of people last week, what is it going to take, someone to get killed before we start doing something about this? Someone was killed last week in this town because we're not enforcing our traffic regulations and we need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Anyone else tonight? Mr. Spitzmacher?
Carl Spitzmacher, the putrid swamp of the Pavarello. And I call it the putrid swamp for the wonderful radio station I listen to in the morning. In regards to bicycling, the word is defensive. The car is out to kill you, beware. I have no trouble with other vehicles because they're bigger than I am and I can stay out of their way because I can ride the gutter. I got a lot of room in that gutter. The lane is this wide, your vehicle is this wide and you're this wide. Pay attention, cars are out to kill you. In regards to the Johnson Street Center, at the women's voting meeting last week in regards to the homeless, there were two eloquent individuals speaking for how I realized it. But the bleeding heart didn't want to hear it like I told it until she heard it from another individual. And this gentleman that spoke really well for what he understands of his 40 years of being homeless throughout the country, just take a look at the problems of other cities. And I made a recommendation in regards to a piece of property that could be used called people of questionable character and so forth, community subdivision, where they could thrive and will cut off the middleman and invite the cartel. They make a choice. You make a choice. And the voters should make a better choice.
That's Carl Spitzmacher for the record. Anyone else tonight? Ms. Pully?
My name is Barbara Pully, P-U-L-L-E-Y. I'm just making some suggestions. I don't know which department is working on planning for the funding and location of the two homeless shelters. I had some prerequisites. One of them, of course, is it cannot be closer than 300 feet to a residential neighborhood or a school. So I'm suggesting, well, maybe there should be a farm with access to a water well and purchase for a septic system. Maybe it could be developed using the labor of the unhoused slash unemployed. Maybe another suggestion is making the existing farm and opportunity resources to be expanded to help a segment of the unhoused. And another one, an idle commercial building in the commercially zoned area with adjacent land for tents. Add improvements for shower and bathroom facilities. I drove by tonight, there's an empty car dealership on the corner of Mountain Stevens, but I know it's a little too close to the apartments to the north. But it's empty, it's been sitting there quite a while, I don't know what is happening. Another suggestion, a city land near the detention center. Add garbage, water, shower and toilet facilities and use Missoula redevelopment funds. Another idea was for funding. Maybe we could request a grant from Amazon, who is building a distribution center at the Y. Maybe in conjunction with the workforce, housing government grant. Their employees will need housing. And then using the funds from the sale of the old library, build a center on the corner of Reserve and West Broadway, which is commercially zoned and not near residential or business. It would be relatively close to the Pavarello Center as well. And using the funds from the Missoula redevelopment to purchase and upgrade that above location is now for sale when I drove by it today. Thank you. Oh, one other thing, my daughter made a suggestion, which I'll pass on. And that was, look to other cities where they have successfully handled the unhoused and the homeless situation. Do not look to Portland where they're, they are still having quite a problem. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ms. Pully. Anyone else tonight?
Howdy, Jeffrey Oswald, I live over on Mount Avenue by the Johnson Center. Talking to my neighbor a couple of weeks ago. Varied opinions of the place and I, personally, living in that neighborhood, the only thing I've ever had stolen was long before the place opened. And he had about the same thing to say, it was actually somebody. Only time he had trouble with somebody stealing something was from somebody in my building before I moved in there. But certainly there are, there are people within the population that are on the street that they commit crimes. I'm sure of it. But there's also people who don't commit crimes. There's some people out there that have crimes committed to them and they only help, they're getting from the city really is being called criminals and being chased from place to place so that they don't have a chance to commit crimes against somebody, I guess. As if being chased around town is going to root out the problems that are there. That there's, there's, there's a lot of drugs on the street in Missoula and I haven't heard about any big fentanyl busts, but there's a lot of people doing it on the streets. I think that law enforcement's job is to protect the public from those who are doing actual harm to others, not just providing an eyesore, oh, that person looks really rough. That's cringe, you know, like, I don't think that's really a good use for police presence in the town. There are people who are doing actual crimes. More police presence to deter that would be great. I was talking to a guy that also lives over in the Franklin neighborhood and, and he was telling me that there, when the, there was a previous period at the Johnson Center when there was a different security company and they had a bigger, a larger mandate within the neighborhood to actually patrol the neighborhood instead of just the Johnson property. And what this, this man told me was that he talked to a lot of his neighbors and that the problems weren't as prevalent at that time when there was funding from the city for the security company in that area to actually go into the area around the Johnson Center, which seems to like be a no-brainer. If you can get this private security company and just put a little bit more cake their way so that they can be present in the area around it, it will cut down on a lot of the problems that have been brought up by residents in that area. And of course, I'm always going to refer back to morality. The big one for me is forgive that you may be forgiven. If you forgive not others their trespasses, neither will your father in heaven forgive you your trespasses. It's, it's, it's the core of my morality, I don't know. It seems, it seems like it ought to be a universal thing that treating other people the way you would like to be treated if you were in their position is the seed of morality and to do the
Ms. Oswald, you're a little over three and a half minutes, so I ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. To do other than that is the opposite of morality. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your comments. Anyone else tonight in the room? All right, seeing none, or Mr. Shae?
Good evening. White and Shae. I've been seated before a couple of times.
Point of order, could we have Mr. Shae move closer to the microphone? The folks on the virtual audience can't hear him.
Bringing out some of the displaced I brought for you. I think people get the idea that the entire homeless body that's outside of the shelter does nothing at their spot besides, you know, do drugs and make trash. In fact, I would like to thank, by the way, the few, very few council people that came to recycle to hear what the rest of the community had to say about homelessness at a, at a monthly potluck that we were able to pull off last Thursday. I really appreciated it. You know, there's very few folks from this body that come out and commune, eat, discuss with us in, in our own time and that's that's poignant. It really, it really touches the heart of the people that are out here and builds trust in, in particular faces. But this being like about three days of cleaning up around my site, this isn't the burn stuff at the Russell. These are, you know, 100-year-old bottles and whatnot that probably should be the interest of the historical societies of the town. And old cans, rusted cans, bones, all stuff that you would think probably we don't want in the river or its bank or the rocks of its shore. We don't want to walk and cut our feet on. And some of us are out there actually taking care of the spaces we're in. Now, I got hit for littering the day of that event because I cooked till 6:00 AM and trusted somebody else to watch all five of my dishes on the fire and I walked away and, and so did they, unfortunately. I went to take a shower at the pub when I saw them there and rushed home. I had already received a littering charge, a public nuisance charge and a fire regulations charge, two of which oddly enough didn't show up in court. When I showed up the next day on the charges that I was demanded to show up by the next end-of-business day to address, only the littering charge was there. But it was kind of the team of Lieutenant J and the business liaison officer to come and see me and give those to me, especially by themselves, after I've called that into question already. I didn't have a chance to give these to the counselors last week, but I would like to go over really quickly some of the stuff that I brought to the attention of the mayor over a week ago and I've had no response or email or anything. In fact, the only real response I've had to these questions is the fact that the first two camps that I asked about getting bathrooms and garbage and Sharp Sat, which I thought was already a confirmed thing. In fact, I'm sure you told me in your meeting, in our meeting, that that was happening. And I expressed to you that Lyons Park would be a great one because there's people below the fence, there's people above the fence, there's people out on the island that would serve that space well. And instead, that space is tagged to be moved Thursday. Now, I assume the old lady named Mary that lives there, a native lady, will be told that the Johnson is her alternative. I happened to be at the Johnson last year when Mary unknowingly, you don't get your mail at the Johnson, you have to go to the Pavarello to receive your mail. You have to catch them during the hours, they'll give it out and then you got to hope that somebody listens.
So, Mr. Shae, you're pushing four minutes, I need you to wrap it up. I'm, I will follow up on the items. Yeah, so we have a three-minute limit and you're a little, you're a little over that, so I need you to wrap it up. And I have a list of follow-ups from our conversation and I will be in touch about those.
So they put Mary's abductor and sexual harasser on the floor, five beds from her at the Johnson. I'm guessing when you tell her that's an option for her to go to, she's not going to be enthralled. I got at one point. Do I really need to start keeping my own tongue?
Thank you. Anyone else in the room tonight? I'm lying, I have Mr. Larson.
Matt Larson, Ward 3, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And thank you, Mayor Hess, for your service. I also wanted to echo the statements of Mr. Hunt. I think that those accommodations and accessibility measures are pretty, pretty standard routine and bare bones and could be done in a heartbeat. I also wanted to echo Clayton's statements, too. I think that it is ridiculous to have MPD out there issuing tickets when the city attorney's office won't even prosecute the ticket. And it's, it's just a waste of time. It's like, it's a runaround for people and we can see this in, in multiple facets when we request the data as citizens. There's a financial barrier set up by the same city attorney's office that's complicit in banning the same houseless people. I've requested the total number of banned houseless people or banned people in general from the city attorney's office and have yet to hear back from that as far as banned emails and banned phone numbers. So we'll see how many the, the city has banned in its years-long practice of banning the most defenseless bracket of citizens in its, in its community. I also think that that is despicable, but I will move on to some more statements regarding an equally concerning issue, which is statements from our local government regarding tax, tax issues and improprieties at the state regarding the offsets, we'll say, on residential property owners. It's disheartening to witness our local officials shift blame onto the state while simultaneously engaging what we can only describe as corporate welfare through the, the branch known as MRA or Missoula Revitalization Agency or Redevelopment Agency. I don't remember the acronym at this point, but whomever is in charge of all the TIF projects, TIF projects like the 1.4 or 1.5 million dollar road in front of the mall, TIF projects like Stockman's Bank, TIF projects like the sidewalks for free for the AC Hotel. We need local TIF reform and we need it now from our local citizen, or counselors. And it's an election season, so hopefully we can see some sort of shift towards that. There's a lot of people out there running for city council and some great choices to choose from, depending on which ward you're in. So I encourage people to research their local city council races and I also would like to comment again later on other agendted items. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Seeing no additional public comment, we can move on to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, I'm sorry, first of all, our scheduled committee beatings for this next week. Ms. Rayvine?
Thank you, Mayor Hess. Sorry, my volume is really loud. I'm going to see if I can do
Not sure if that's gonna be any better. All right, let me share my screen. All right, tonight's committee schedule. Uh, city council is scheduling, scheduling committee meetings for this coming Wednesday, September 20th. All committee meetings are held in person in city council chambers and virtually via Microsoft Teams. Uh, and here we go. Here's what we've got. Budget Committee of the whole will meet on the 20th from, at 11 o'clock. Uh, they'll be considering the Public Works Fee Schedule and the Fiscal Year 2023 Third Quarter Budget Amendments. Uh, Public Safety and Health, Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee will meet at 11:40. Uh, they will be considering two collective bargaining agreements, even though that's not really apparent for what's on the agenda. But MFPE Building Inspectors is a collective bargaining unit agreement, uh, is a collective bargaining unit here at the city, and Angela Simons is, is with HR. So that's what I'm deriving. Uh, and the MFPE is also a bargaining agreement for our wastewater plant operators. So these are two collective bargaining agreements that are being brought to committee for the city council's consideration from the city's help, uh, Human Resources Office. Uh, the Public Works Mobility Committee will meet this Wednesday at 12 o'clock, taking up the Grant Creek Road posted speed limit. And Climate Conservation and Parks Committee will meet at 1 o'clock. Uh, they'll be taking up three items. The first is to add the Skyview Sport Court to the Knife River Contract, number 89130. Uh, there is a Q and A presentation and master plan for Marshall Mountain Open Space Acquisition and the Fiscal Year 24 After-School Program Services Agreement that the Parks and Recreation Department has. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Are there any changes to that schedule? Uh, Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. I don't know if we, we need to make this official, but I am going to be moving up the after-school to the first agenda item for, uh, conservation.
Thanks for noting that. Any other changes? All right, seeing none, uh, we can move on to our consent agenda. So items on our consent agenda were generally approved unanimously, uh, in city council committees. We save a little time on Monday nights by taking those items up as a package. Ms. Raybine will read the list of items allowed, uh, so anyone in the audience or anyone watching on MCAT has the opportunity to comment. And we'll take, um, community comment and council comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
Thanks, Mayor Hess. I'm gonna share my screen. Tonight's consent agenda has 15 items. The first item is to approve claims, which are the city's bills. Uh, tonight's city council is being asked to approve accounts payable for checks that are dated September 19th, 2023, that's tomorrow, in the amount of $1,605,783.87. Number two is to approve a resolution levying corrected taxes on the lots, pieces and parcels of land located in the Downtown Business Improvement District of the City of Missoula for Fiscal Year 2024 in the corrected amount of $429,737.32, in accordance with Section 7-12-1132 of Montana Code annotated. Uh, that, the resolution was originally passed by city council on August 28th of 2023. Number three is to appoint Leah Bosler to serve as a regular member on the Open Space Affairs Committee with a term that begins immediately and ending on January 20, 25th of 2024. That's not a very long time. Uh, number four is to appoint Juliet, I hope I'm saying this right, Galen or Galen, for a term beginning immediately and ending on May 31st of 2024. Uh, she's being appointed as a youth member to the Energy and Climate Team. Number five is to approve a resolution of the city council committing the city to commencing the Johnson Street Property Master Planning Process within one year with the goal of completing demolition and site preparation of appropriate buildings within three years. Number six is to confirm to not adopt an amendment to Resolution 8440 to increase the minimum allocation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to $300,000. Uh, folks, a yes vote on this means no, and a no vote means yes. They're my very favorite motions. Uh, number seven is to set a public hearing on September 25th, 2023 for notification of JAG 2023 Grant Application and approval of the required MOU with Missoula County for the application. Folks, in English, that means that the Police Department is an annual recipient of the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. And, uh, every year as a condition of receipt of that grant from the federal government, the city council has to hold a public hearing and, uh, city council and, and Missoula County enter into an, uh, memorandum of understanding annually about the expenditure of those grant funds. Number eight is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Axon to enter into a five-year agreement for Axon for body worn cameras, vehicle cameras, interview room cameras, and digital evidence management at a cost of $1,563,169.20. That is for your Missoula City Police Department. Number nine is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign three-year, the three-year collective bargaining agreement with the IBEW. This is the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 233. These, this bargaining unit represents, uh, folks who work in the city's communications shop in the Public Works Mobility Department. Number 10 is to set a public hearing on October 2nd, 2023 and preliminarily adopt an ordinance revising Chapter 8.02 of Missoula Municipal Code entitled the Missoula City County Health Code, adopted by reference to adopt the revised version of Regulation 3, which is entitled Solid Waste Management, as approved by the City County Health Board on August 17th of 2023, and to amend the Missoula Municipal Code, Section 8.28, that's actually Chapter 8.28, Rubbish and Garbage, to repeal the Missoula Bear Buffer Zone requirements and change the penalties for violations from criminal misdemeanors to civil infractions. Number 11 is to appoint Kimberly McLean to serve as an alternate, a large member, at-large member on the Design Review Board. Kimberly McLean, we appreciate you for volunteering on this board. Uh, this term begins immediately and ends on January 31st of 2026. Number 12 is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the original development agreement with Talosen Properties LLC for the Lower Miller Creek Road and Old Bitter Road Roundabout, withholding the amendment added in Section 1D. Number 13 is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Jack Moffett and Heather McMylin to the Building Code Board of Appeals. Thanks to both of those folks for their long term of service on that board for terms that begin immediately and expire on June 30th of 2026. Number 14 is to adopt a resolution, the Missoula City Council, in support of the Missoula Metropolitan Planning Organization's Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Program Grant Application. Uh, and because it's transportation, we have a new acronym called the RCN, uh, to describe that program. Uh, and the project is titled Reconnecting East Missoula. And finally, folks, number 15 is to adopt the updated City of Missoula Flood Control Facilities Operation and Maintenance Manual and Emergency Action Plan. Uh, we call the operation, uh, Operation Maintenance Manual an O and M Manual, and the Emergency Action Plan, we affectionately refer to as an EAP for accreditation of the Clark Fork levies. And that's tonight's consent agenda, folks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any public comment on the consent agenda? Anyone in the room? Mr. Hunt?
Kevin Hunt, Ward One. I have comments on two items. First one is on item 5.8, uh, for the agreement for cameras and digital evidence for the police department. And, um, I just am curious about something. And if any of you know the answer, I would appreciate, uh, before you vote, letting, uh, us know. Uh, it's certainly important that, um, the police department has state-of-the-art, modernized equipment for, uh, evidence handling and also for their body cams, so that we don't have cutouts on, uh, videotape stops and so forth. My question is whether any of this money is going for license plate readers or for, um, uh, facial recognition technology. If it is, this is a very, very big deal. And if, and if any of you know whether that's true, and if it's true, I'd suggest this item needs to be taken out of the consent agenda and set for public hearing. Um, maybe you, maybe, maybe none of you know whether those kinds of items are on the list. If you don't know, I, please don't vote on this tonight. This is something we, we need to know. Facial recognition is coming up all over the country. It's a horrible invasion of privacy. Um, the second item is on, uh, 8.8, uh, excuse me, 5.10. And, um, what I noticed in this, it's, it seems like a, a pretty good idea, but what I noticed is on the very next section, after the second part that, that you've deleted in red, um, the second part that is in, in red is deleted. Like, I don't know what number that is. Maybe it's 828089. Fortunately, I, I made a screenshot of the provision I'm gonna talk about, but I don't have that entire document in front of me. But 828090, which isn't affected by your ordinance, but is plainly in it, um, outlaws distributing of handbills, um, while on a city sidewalk or on a street or avenue or alleys of the city. Maybe the intention was distributing like throwing them around, but that's not what it says. It, it is unlawful for any person to throw scattered, distribute, or cause to be thrown scattered or distributed upon or along any of the sidewalk streets, avenues, or alleys of the city or within, uh, or upon, notice the within, any of the public spaces within the city. And then there's a typographic there, and bills, and it should be any, not and, uh, bills, posters, dodgers, cards, or other advertising matter of any kind. And I submit this just flatly, uh, facially unconstitutional. Um, an argument could be made, well, distributing means just throwing them around because all the other acts they talk about, uh, involve that. But, um, there's no, there, there's nothing to really say that's, that's the case. Distribute has its common meaning. And the first, the first common meaning of, of just distributing a handbill would not be throwing it around. It would be handing it out to people. And this is basically unconstitutional. If you're going to amend an ordinance like this, it, it just makes me question whether, whether a lot of counselors even read these, um, proposed ordinances when they get, when they get to them. Do they read them? Do they read the whole ordinance? They just look at the red parts and, and the staff report and where I'm stamping? Uh, this concerns me a lot. You have an opportunity, you have an opportunity here without waiting to see if you're fortunate enough to catch it in the code reform, um, to take care of something that's unconstitutional. Uh, again, a free speech problem in the city that has free speech corner. Unbelievable. Let's do, let's do the right thing and let's, let's do this housekeeping on this. So how about postponing this or somebody make an amendment?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hunt. And I'll, um, I'll address your, your points, your questions after the, um, public comment concludes. Anyone else with public comment? Hi, come on up.
Yeah, I received. Thank you. I, my name is David Larson, and I received a letter that said that, well, first of all, I live at Guy Street Big Way. And there's a proposal to bring more affordable housing in the field behind Big Way. I received a letter that, oh, it will be taken today on that.
And, and that's, that's correct. And that's coming up just a little bit later here in our, um, in our agenda.
Okay, okay. I, uh, can, can I reach my home now?
Yeah, you're welcome to, you're welcome to. Go ahead.
Okay, so, so I've been living on Big Way now for six years. And, uh, my worry, my concern is the lack of infrastructure. The sidewalks are ho, ho, horrible. The lighting is horrible. And I don't think it's a good idea to bring more people in at this time. Entirely pace, the infrastructure, did the sidewalks, did the lighting needed to make it safe for people. Left myself to drive a motorbike, like young ladies walking around. I'm worried about human trafficking. I believe about rape because the lighting really sucks. So before you bring in more people, first the infrastructure first. That should come first. And that I am all for affordable housing. Before I bought my home, I lived in an affordable housing unit. So I am all for that. But the infrastructure needs to come first before more people. We gotta be safe over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. And, um, I'd be happy to put you in touch with some of our staff who could go through some of the infrastructure plans for that area. Um, there are several things in the works that will come along, uh, some of it before, some of it with, some of it after this project, and, and would be happy to, um, uh, put you in touch with our, um, our staff who could provide some information on that.
Yeah, as a father, I do that. The, the Simmons Road, they will plan bringing a sidewalk along Simmons Road. I worked against the border like five years ago to do that and still no sidewalk. So, so yeah, plans move slowly, buildings move more quickly. And so let's prioritize infrastructure over putting more people in danger, in danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Anyone else tonight? Mr. Shea, on the consent agenda?
Uh, I wanted to comment on 5, 4, and 5, 5. I was, uh, quite impressed to see that we're taking on a volunteer advisor for, uh, a position that's being filled there. It obviously bums me out that we're not hearing a motion on an advisor to the city from the homeless community on how we remove people from their camps, how we deal with these issues, how we make decisions in that matter. issues, how we make decisions in that matter. That was definitely one of the points that we went across in our one-on-one meeting. If we made the 12 camp idea to have six working camps, not two or four, and stretch their monthly, so like three or six months that they moved, those people could be advisors to the city, they could be liaisons, they could be leading those camps for you. They seem like helpful options. I think we also spoke on the idea of starting just even one intentional camp.
So you're getting, you're getting a little far afield from the, the items on the consent agenda, which is what we're taking.
I'm talking about advisors, which is what, uh, what we're, we're talking about. And I think that even starting one of those, which would make one advisor to the city, one liaison, would be helpful. And it's not someone you'd have to hire.
Anything on the energy and climate team specifically?
Excuse me?
Anything on the energy and climate team specifically?
The second one's on the Johnson.
Okay.
And what I have to say there is that there were a lot of questions I had to ask about the Johnson in this meeting. I'd definitely like to go over a couple of them. I was at the Johnson just recently. All of the money that we seem to put in, there's still showers outside. There's still bathrooms outside. None of the changes we heard about seem to happen. There's just much more high security cameras, which is great. They watch the lockers, they watch the cars now. They didn't do any of that last year. But yeah, nothing that we seem to hear about happened. And now we're going to tear all that down in a year. And in the middle of this homeless emergency, that just gives us one more place where all the people who are let out of the Pavarello, on and out, or on a lifetime out, or never lost out there, still have no place to go. A camp to serve the people that cannot go there, that will not go there, that have fear or PTSD in these self shelter situations is still not being addressed. None of the sexual harassment from lead supervisors that are being retrained for this year has been addressed. None of the theft problems that was addressed by police last year to Christie and Ginger, telling them that throwing people's stuff away with no notice every day, not even checking the hospitals or the jails to see if they're hung up there, is theft against Montana theft law. And no matter how private their entity is, that they should have started rewriting their policies then. There's still no list of rules on the wall at that joint. All the problems are still there. And we're sending those people right back into it again.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. You're at three and a half minutes.
I'm sure I am.
Okay. Anyone else tonight on the consent agenda? All right, seeing no one else in the room, I have Mr. Larson.
Matt Larson, Ward three. Thanks for allowing me to speak. Um, I'd like to speak on a few different items. Uh, I'd like to speak on Carlino's amendment. I think that we should be asking MR8s to remit monies and pause some of the corporate welfare and, or districts that, that are going on. And in addition to funding that, I think that that's, that's not too much to ask for. In regards to the digital evidence agreement in specific or digital evidence management part of the, the agreement with Axion or Axon, however you say their name, it's extremely overpriced. I believe it's quoted at $300,000 for the second year of service. This is ridiculous, given the city's expansive IT department. We can use AWS, Amazon Cloud Services, Google Cloud Services, various different services, as well as onsite servers to, to house this data. And you could even probably own the, the, the servers for this much money. It's, it's, it's probably almost as expensive as the cameras themselves. So I would implore you to take that into account, along with Mr. Hunt's statements about facial recognition and possibly send this back to commission, or I mean, council in order to figure out if it's an effective use of monies, especially because this year is a tight budgeting season. I think it would, it would be beneficial in that regard. And maybe you could even get a, a better deal for Maxon. As far as the cameras themselves, I think it's great for the police to have accountability through the cameras, but I think that we have a problem with MPD regarding the release of the footage of officer involved shootings. We don't see them as a community like other parts of the, the country and free world do. We see them at coroner's inquests five years later. So I would challenge this administration and this city council to find a happy medium between, you know, releasing this as soon as they happen and in between that date and five years from that date. You know, I think that we can release these videos into the community and let the community see what happens as a, as a deterrent to crime and as a, a way to hold our police officers accountable. So, thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. And seeing no additional public comment, we can return to council discussion. Just to address a couple of things, the, the, thanks for flagging the license plate camera, which are not legal under Montana State statute and are not included here, nor are we including facial recognition in that. So just confirmation on that. The item regarding the outdated code on, on handbills and distributing material or distributing advertisements, you know, periodically we, we find outmoded or outdated bits of code. There was a bit of, there was, and oftentimes they're brought to us by members of the public. So want to, I want, I do want to note that the purpose of this is to set a public hearing wherein other adjustments to Title Eight could be in order. But we do periodically clean these up. And a good example of that was a, a very out of date prohibition on driving a vehicle over 8,000 pounds on 23rd Avenue, or on 23rd Street and, and with a obscene penalty. So things like this come up from time to time, and I appreciate you flagging it. Any council discussion or anyone wish to divide the question on any of these items? Mr. Carlino?
Yeah, could we divide five point five and five point six? And then I also have an amendment for five point 12.
Do you want to vote on five point five and five point six together or separately?
Separately.
Okay. And so those, those are, we'll, we'll do that. And your amendment is in order on five point 12.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Going back to the discussion about the roundabout and who's going to pay for the roundabout, I just wanted, I know we had a five to four vote on this, on the staff proposed amendment during committee, but now that all 12 of us are here, I think it's appropriate to bring it back a second time. And so I just want to propose.
So, Mr. Carlino, without objection, I'll, let's take that item up under committee reports. Let's just, let's just pull five point 12 from the consent agenda to committee reports and we'll, and then we can have a more robust discussion on it. Okay. All right. So any additional discussion? Okay, so we can have a roll call vote, Ms. Raybine, on items five point one through five point four, five point seven through five point 11, and five point 13 through five point 15.
Okay, on the consent agenda as amended.
Yes.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yes.
Kontos.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Basika.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That's 12 eyes on the consent agenda as amended.
And item five point five?
For folks who might be listening in, item five point five is that resolution to the city council about the master planning on the Johnson Street Center. Becerra.
Yes.
Carlino.
No.
Kontos.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Basika.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
And Anderson.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? It's 11 eyes, one nay.
And item five point six? Ms. Raybine, I don't know if you're waiting for software or muted, but we can do five point six.
Sorry, I just made a spiel back here and none of you heard me. So this is the item about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And a yes means no and a no means yes on this one. Because the motion says confirmation to not adopt an amendment to increase the minimum annual allocation to the trust fund. I think we start this round with Kontos. I'm sorry, Carlino.
No.
Kontos.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
No.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Basika.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
And Becerra.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 eyes and two nays.
All right. And the consent agenda is approved with the exception of item five point 12, which is the development agreement regarding Riverfront Trail subdivision Phase 1A. And we will take that up later in the meeting under committee reports. We have no comments from city staff or the various city, city entities. We do have two special presentations in the form of proclamations. First, whereas human caused climate change is resulting in more extreme weather patterns, wildfire smoke, and extreme temperatures, and the more scientists learn about the causes and dangers, dangers of human caused climate change, the more we need to act. And whereas we are more aware than ever of tangible solutions to mitigate the climate crisis and become more resilient to its impacts, such as electrifying our buildings, investing in renewable energy, and choosing sustainable transportation. And whereas Missoula County and the city of Missoula have committed to implementing the Climate Ready Missoula Plan to use 100% clean electricity in the urban area by 2030 and to a Joint Electrify Missoula campaign in collaboration with Climate Smart Missoula. And whereas we all have a part to play in addressing the, this unprecedented climate crisis, from renters and homeowners to contractors, businesses, and nonprofits, and that we must all address it together with urgency if we are to succeed. And whereas we know it is not too late to act, that we can and must eliminate fossil fuel use in our transportation, buildings, operations, and lives, and that we can build a better future, not based on the premise of sacrifice, but based on our ability to transform. Therefore, be it resolved that we, Missoula County and the city of Missoula, do hereby proclaim September 16th through 23rd, 2023, as Climate Solutions Week, which will culminate in the Fifth Annual Climate and Clean Energy Expo, all to inform, educate, and energize into action Missoula County and city, city residents, so that we can meet this moment capably with urgency together. And whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation every year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Jordan Hess, Mayor of the, of the city of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities that privilege involves. And thank you to Ms. West and Ms. Basika for bringing that forward. Oh, you, a comment on that, Ms. Anderson?
I'm sorry, I just want to make a quick comment. I appreciate the proclamation, the work that went into it, but I can't help but not underscore the fact that when that document was written, not all of the rights that were given in that were given to all citizens. And it took many, many decades to expand those rights to everyone who has the privilege of being an American. And we are still fighting the inequities that have been in place for generations. So I wanted to just put that asterisk with it because I think that we sometimes don't always acknowledge that parts of history when we're talking in reference to things like this.
Thank you for that. Mr. Carlino?
Yeah, thanks for proclamations. Yeah, our constitutional rights aren't going to protect themselves. And I think it's important that we, you know, look at, you know, what we're doing as a council and as a local government to make sure that we're following the Constitution. I know there's been plenty of people whose public comments have been cut off short. And I believe we need to do a better job of upholding a freedom of speech in this, in this building here. And also, I know many of our neighbors and Missoulians who are living unhoused are getting their constitutional rights abused by the city as well. Their Eighth Amendment rights to not have cruel and unusual punishment and excessive fines is currently being abused by the city from trying to move our, our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness from place to place without providing them anywhere to go, ticketing them, bringing them to court, is, this is all breaking people's constitutional rights. So these rights aren't going to protect themselves even 230 something years later. So I hope we can reflect on when, when maybe these rights aren't being upheld in this, in this place and trying to do a better job to make sure that we, everybody has their, has their rights upheld.
All right. We have no items under final consideration tonight. We have three public hearings and we'll take them in the order listed. The first is the program year 2022 CDBG and Home outcomes. And we have Kendra Lyssom with our public hearing tonight, our staff report. Lyssom?
Yeah, thank you. Let me share my screen here. All right. Um, so myself and Karen Giswold are here to present on our keeper. And our keeper is one of the obligations that the city must fulfill as an entitlement city for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships programs. We present one of these every program year, and our program year runs from July 1st through June 30th. And just as a reminder that these are federal funds and they don't come out of the city's So each year, the city receives federal funds, funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. And Missoula has been an entitlement city for the CDBGs program since 1999 and a participating jurisdiction for homes since 2003. These funds help benefit, you know, these funds help benefit individuals with low and moderate income and leverage resources to improve the supply of affordable housing, public improvements, and public services. The keeper is our chance to tell the story of what we accomplished using our federal dollars over the last year. And we report our accomplishments in connection not only with our annual goals as outlined in our annual action plan, but also in relation to the larger goals we set in our consolidated plan, which is published every five years. Program year 2022 was the fourth year of our 2019 through 2023 consolidated plan, which means this current program year will be the last year of our current con plan. With that in mind, we're currently in the process of updating our plan for the next five years. The data and information we collect now will help inform how we spend our CDBG and home dollars in the future. And as a part of that, we're kicking off a survey of housing and community development challenges facing Missoula residents. The survey is open to all Missoula residents, and we want to know things like, is your houses, housing situation currently meeting your needs? is your housing situation currently meeting your needs? What is your experience finding housing in Missoula? How could it be improved? Have you felt you were denied housing because of how you look or because you have kids or a disability? You can share your experience by using the QR code. You hold your smartphone camera up to the screen, and it should take you right to the survey. Or you can go to the URL that's on your screen as well. Your answers will help shape housing solutions for the City of Missoula over the next five years, and you'll be entered to win a hundred dollar Visa gift card. All information that you share in the survey is completely confidential. So now back to our CAPER. In Program Year 22, we were awarded approximately $424,000 in home dollars and $560,000 in CDBG. We receive around the same amount every year, which means that the funds aren't adjusted for inflation. So we're really having to do more with less. With this allocation plus any program income we've received from past projects, we were able to fund a total of four projects. So in 2022, we funded two home projects by continuing to support both the Trinity and the Bellagio, affordable housing compartments, and both of those are currently leasing up. And we also funded two CDBG projects. We supported the purchase of a single-family home in its adjacent lot to be placed in a community land trust. Habitat for Humanity will help build three additional affordable homes on that vacant lot. We're also supporting the construction of the Pavarello Centered Housing Montana Heroes Project, which will provide 20 transitional housing units to unhoused veterans. And here's an overview of our outcomes. We have come a long way this year with the leasing up of the Bellagio and Trinity in particular. And you can see that our CDBG and home dollars do make a difference in our community. We would appreciate it if you and the public would comment on our CAPER. And you can do so by going to engagemissoula.com until September 26. Or you can email Kendra or myself, the email's listed here. And all public comments will be included in the final CAPER that is submitted ahead. And we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Giswoda. With that, I'll open the public hearing if anyone would like to comment on these. We'll keep this open for a week if anyone has comments next week as well. Seeing none in the room, Mr. Larson online.
Yeah, Matt's Larson, Ward Three, just citing the irony of doing these studies and not funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing, I'm sorry, come on up.
What's going on for a while? Do I have to identify myself?
Please do.
I'm Mike Wilson. So my understanding that if you're anywhere in the U.S., you can buy property in Montana and start an Airbnb. So I think this is taking a lot of housing away from people who live here, have people who want to live here, and taking a lot of money out of the community because that money's going into other people's communities in other states. So I think, I believe Bozeman tried to outlaw this at one point. I'm not sure if they had success with it, but I think if Montana were to say, if you're not a resident, if you don't live in Montana, you can do this, that will open up a lot of housing opportunities for people who actually want to live here and not just make money off the land this year. Just an idea.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Clayton Shea. I wasn't as briefed on this, and I tried to take it when I could really quickly there, but it seemed like one of them was about community building. And I had just taken part with Open Aid on a new community building grant. I'm assuming maybe it's attached, and they did a great job of doing a overdose awareness prevention dinner, where they brought in people from the unhoused community or people from the addicted community and used their information to try and make things more accessible to, and testing, whatnot, anything that could be brainstormed by that community that might be helpful. Again, this seems like a keen advisory type of position, or, you know, even a one day where we're asking people actually living in these situations to comment on them and give us advice. Also, it would seem to me that if buying land out of these trusts and setting them up to make affordable housing is part of its purvey, then an idea that I floated with Mr. Hess there at our meeting, that maybe small businesses should be targeted that are for sale. There's one right across from West Side Lanes that Mom and Pop Storage. The house is big enough to hold four or five people, maybe six. It's a business that's set up to run, that could run for the city, and five, six unhoused people could live there and run it for the city. And it would be an alternative living situation. It would be the city as a reference point to get another job. It should be a pretty easy place to transition through and go back out into the community. And taking up small businesses like that and running them for the good of the city, the money would come to them. A lot of unhoused people that are in these shelters that need storage, that would be a great place to do it. You know, we wouldn't be even asking the public to store their belongings with these folks. We could cater to all these folks that are 600 plus in the city that also need storage. There's a lot of small businesses like this that could easily be taken up. The ones with housing would even be better attached, you know? That would be something that would be an interesting pilot program to see a city get beyond.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? All right. Come on up. Mr. Oswald.
Jeffrey Oswald. Mount Avenue. I really liked what Brother Behind You Mean With That said. Missoula's been a kind of a special place because of the people who live here. And that there's a lot of people who grew up in this town. And probably, you know, like some of them went to other places for part of their life, and they might come back here and might want to raise a family here or something. And intermediate step coming back, we might maybe be renting a place to live. But that's becoming increasingly difficult. And any plan that's looking forward in this community should be looking for a diversification of rental levels so that people could work their way up through the community and eventually become homeowners here if, wow, that's kind of out of reach at this point for most people, isn't it? But it's a functional community that has strength of population on different income levels. Tends to build a fraternity of different viewpoints, which I believe that diversification of viewpoints is what makes cities or nations great. Because if everybody thinks the same thing, then it's, I haven't seen that yet. Oh, well, thank you.
Anyone else tonight? All right, this, come on up.
Hi, good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Danielle Vasquez, and for the record, that's spelled V-A-Z-Q-U-E-Z. Sorry to mess up.
That's fine, it's, it's a sensitive mic, so you're fine.
Yeah, so I'm here today as a constituent of Ward One, but also as employee of Montana Woman Vote. And I think I might have missed the first public comment period, but I just, so we, these past couple of months have held some community conversations on like housing and lack thereof in Missoula. And we just have some public comment we gathered from some community members. And I'm just wondering if I could submit those to the secretary?
Absolutely, I can take those, and we'll get them distributed to everyone. Thank you. All right, anyone else tonight on the CBDG and Home Outcomes? All right, seeing none. So this public hearing will remain open until next week, and we can move on to our second public hearing. So this is a public forum, which you all have heard me say a number of times, is a land use item that where another unit of local government is not following our zoning. And the legislature has told us that we have to have a public hearing. We have no ability to take action based on that hearing, so it's a little bit performative. But we will get to hear the ways in which the Detention Center parking lot deviates from Title Twenty. And so we have Charlie Rehm here with our staff report. And then we'll take public comment and any council comment. And the county officials are, will take this into consideration as to whether or not they proceed with their parking lot that doesn't meet zoning. So with that, I'll turn it over to Charlie Rehm.
Hello, my name is Charlie. My pronouns are they/them, and I represent the Current Planning and Land Use Division for CPDI. Community Planning, Development, and Innovation has received notice from WGM Group on behalf of Missoula County of their intent to construct a parking lot to the east of their existing detention facility at 2340 Mullen Road. The proposed project includes a new parking lot and driveline access from Broadway Street. Missoula County is a development agency, and City Council is authorized to hold a public hearing when an agency proposes to develop or use public land contrary to Title Twenty zoning regulations. The public hearing is known as the public forum. The Detention Center is located at 2340 Mullen Road. The temporary safe outdoor space is on the same parcel addressed 1975 West Broadway Street. And the maroon star marks the location of the existing main building. The parcel is zoned M1 R2 or limited industrial residential. Parcels to the west are also zoned M1 R2. Parcels located to the north and east are located M1 dash two, which is limited industrial. And parcels to the south and east of the subject property are zoned C2 dash four or community commercial. The land use designation of the Missoula County Detention Center and the temporary safe outdoor space is regional commercial and services. This designation is for commercial uses, serving the needs of the broader region and often requiring larger land areas. Surrounding land use designations include community mixed use and parks and open lands. There are office, construction, sales, and service, medical office, university, and residential mixed use surrounding the detention center. The surrounding uses are compatible with the land use designation outlined in the growth policy. Title Twenty, Section 208595 states that government agencies may propose to use public land contrary to local zoning regulations. When ever an agency proposes to use public land contrary to local zoning regulations, a public hearing must be held to allow for comment on the proposed use, and the agency shall attend the public hearing. City Council does not have the power to deny or condition the request. This means there will be no vote on the item. The county may move forward with the proposal following the public forum. However, WGM Group and Missoula County may consider comment. This is the site plan of the proposed project. The proposed parking lot is accessed from Broadway, connects to existing infrastructure north of the building, and the lot itself will be located on the east side of the Detention Center. The proposed drive aisle runs north of the temporary safe outdoor space, and the proposed parking lot will be adjacent to the affordable mixed-use building on the parcel to the east. Installation of a parking lot of this size would normally require compliance with several landscaping requirements for both the new and existing parking lots. No new landscaping is proposed. The parking lot will not bring the parcel out of compliance with the 15% general landscaping area requirement. Per Title Twenty sixty-five twenty, one tree per 1,000 square feet of landscape area is required for a total of 112 new trees. No new trees will be provided, and there are approximately 50 existing on the site. Six shrubs per 1,000 square feet of landscape area are required for a total of 671 shrubs. The number of shrubs and trees required by the general landscaping standards will not be met. The number of shrubs required by street frontage landscaping standards will not be met on the Mullen frontage. The number of trees required in the frontage is met. Six shrubs per 1,000 square feet of street frontage landscaping area are required for a total of 66 shrubs, and none will be provided. The number of required trees and shrubs are not provided along Broadway either. There is approximately 610 square feet of street frontage landscaping area along Broadway. Two trees and six shrubs are required. Zero trees and zero shrubs are provided on the Broadway frontage in the proposed design. The standards of this section require landscape islands to be installed in parking lots every 135 feet, to be planted with ground cover and a deciduous tree per 180 square feet of landscape area with at least one tree per island. Parking lot landscaping requires 10% of parking lot to be landscaped. For the new parking lot, 2,262 square feet of landscaping is required. The interior parking lot landscape area, the required number of trees, and the islands at a maximum of 135 feet spacing will not be met. Per Title Twenty twenty sixty-five fifty, there should be a buffer consisting of berms, walls, or plantings at least 36 inches in height along the length of the parking area frontage, or a landscaping area with a minimum depth of 20 feet with the density of plantings of two trees and six shrubs for 1,000 square feet of required area. Neither of the options will be met for the new parking lot. And finally, per Title Twenty twenty sixty-five sixty, a buffer is required when non-residential development occurs on a parcel that abuts a parcel used for residential purposes. A buffer is a landscape area eight feet wide with one shrub every two feet and one tree every 30 feet, a fence or a fence with five feet landscape area and one tree every 20 feet, or a landscape berm at least four feet tall. The parcel to the east of the detention facility and parking lot has a residential use, and no buffer will be provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. So with that, I will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to comment on the county's proposal. All right, seeing no one in the room. And go to our online attendees. Mr. Larson?
Yes, Matt's Larson, Ward Three. I think that it should meet the bare requirements for vegetation, shrubs, trees, or at least attempt to, you know, five new trees. You know, I don't know why the Detention Center specifically has to stick out like a authoritarian's sort of, like, it is a chance where we could make it look nice. And there is a huge residential development going in there, so it would make sense to make a buffer there. You know, I know I'm just speaking to WGM Group at this point, and they may or may not be a fan, but I, you know, I implore whomever is designing this to please add more trees and please add more of a buffer between the residential development and this parking lot. It's, yeah, it's a chance to make something that's really ugly and sticks out and is used by a lot of people, like it or not. Something that's prettier and, I don't know, less obtrusive. And it is built into the code already, so we might as well try and at least meet the bare minimum requirements. I think it helps the city and, you know, it helps the inhabitants of the city too. The buffer thing, I think, is especially egregious to not be included. I think that's going to be a continued issue with debris and, you know, just issues with residents in the adjacent development. residents in the adjacent development. But I guess we'll see what gets done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Seeing no additional public comments, I will close the public hearing and they're all, they're all staff, or I mean, council members, I'm sorry. Mr. Lonsbury, do you want to respond to any comments on behalf of the county?
Thank you, not been.
Thanks, Mary Hess. I just wanted to say, I think, one thing that might not have been recognized in the presentation is that all of this is occurring inside the secure fence of the detention facility. So it's actually occurring inside the secure perimeter of the detention facility. And that's why it can't meet some of the ground cover and shrub requirements because that would obstruct the view and would provide an unsafe environment for those who are in our custody and care. And so I just wanted to make sure that was on the record for folks.
Thank you, Mr. Lonsbury. So the public hearing is closed and I'll go to council comments, starting with Ms. Vaseka.
Thank you. I know that my, this is just a public hearing and then we're just holding the public hearing and what I say has no weight, but I just wanted to have it on record that I know it is legal for this to happen, but I think it's extremely hypocritical of a government entity being able to deviate from the laws that we are putting on other people and private citizens would not be able to do this. So I just wanted to get that on record and maybe we should figure out how we can adhere to our own rules as we expect private citizens to do so.
Ms. West?
Thanks. I actually had a question about the site plan and I guess that portion of the road that runs between the current TSOS site and connects to, I guess, the interior of the enclosed perimeter. Is that, it's been a little while since I've been out to the TSOS and I don't remember there being a driving lane connecting to it. I guess, is that the current configuration of the paved area on, on the TSOS site? I don't remember there being this jog to the, I guess that's the north.
Charlie, are you able to take that?
Sure. Correct me if I'm wrong, Cassie, but my understanding is that the detention center has been through a public forum once before for the temporary safe outdoor space? Yeah, maybe was included there?
Cassie Chapard, planning supervisor. I was actually hoping Chris could answer this since I haven't been out there recently either, to know if it is installed like that.
Certainly, I'm happy to try and answer that question. So there is currently an access road that provides access to the temporary safe outdoor space. It was originally designed and continues to be designed to provide that straight through. So there's a turnoff just as you enter into the temporary safe outdoor parking space to what would be the east and south there. But there, it is already constructed to include part of that roadway as part of the approach.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. West, anything else? Okay. All right. Any other comments from council members? All right. Well, the county is, through Mr. Lonsbury, is in attendance and we trust that they've received our comments through this bizarre process prescribed in state law. And we can move on to our third public hearing, which is the same thing, another public forum. And this is for the Scott Street Community Land Trust. And Tara Pocari has our staff report.
Okay, just got my video. Everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. Again, Tara Pocari, my pronouns are she/her. I'm also a planner with Development Services and was just said, this is another public forum. This one will be for the Scott Street Community Land Trust. So the project is located on the north side, just at the northwest corner of Scott and Charlo Streets, just a few blocks north of the railroad tracks there. It's also located directly north of the ongoing Scott Street Market Rate multi-dwelling project that a lot of you might remember. That was a rezone just a few months back. So just to clarify that this is a different parcel, just north of there, then was discussed then. The subject property has residential to the north and east across Scott Street and then the parcels to the south and west are currently vacant lots. Parcel zoned M1R2 limited industrial residential, as are the lots to the north and to the west. M1R2 zoning allows a maximum residential density of one unit per 1,000 square feet of parcel area. Since the subject parcel is just over 128,000 square feet, it could technically have 128 units developed. But that would be, of course, if all other zoning and parking standards were able to be met, the design, all of that. Zoning of RM1-45 and M1R-3 to the south and east also have similar maximum zoning densities as a subject property. And that's whether or not they're currently developed to that density at this So just for context, the land use designation for the property and the growth policy is neighborhood mixed use, which is the same to the north and the south with residential high to the east and then some industrial light to the west. I won't go over public forum rules as you're all obviously lucky enough to have a couple of them today, but I'll just note that the city owns the property right now. So as a government agency, they're eligible to use the public forum process for our Title 20 zoning requirements. Okay, so the actual project, this project is part of a public-private partnership between the city and Rivara Development LLC. It'll create 89 new units and that'll be in a community land trust model. It'll include a mix of townhomes as well as four multifamily buildings. And like I said before, it's located just adjacent to the Scott Street Market Rate parcel, which includes a few mixed use buildings and a good amount of additional open space right nearby. So here's the site plan. I know it's a little small on everyone's screen, so just to describe what's on the slide here. They're proposing 35 townhomes spread along the northeast and west sides of the property with four multifamily dwellings kind of in the center along the south property line there, which add another 54 units total. The townhomes all have their own private parking and garages while the multifamily parking is spread throughout three surface parking lots. So to the point of the public forum, there are five proposed exemptions to zoning code included with this project. Just a quick overview, one is regarding the positioning of the buildings with respect to the right of way. The next is a slight parking deficit. The third is for onsite activity area. Going down the list, the fourth item, the project will not include buffers that would usually be required between residential development. And then finally, the required amount of landscaping or landscaped islands won't be included in the vehicular areas in order to allow for as much parking as possible. So to dive into each one individually, the first one regarding building positioning comes from Section 2490. You can see it on the screen there from Title 20. It says that multi-dwelling buildings must have a clearly defined ground floor entrance that faces a public street or an alley. With this request, two of the buildings will not directly face the right of way. And that's in order to best ensure both convenient and direct pedestrian access and general flow throughout the site. The second one, Title 20, Section 206020 discusses our parking requirements. Since the townhomes will have their private garage parking, their parking standards will be fully met. However, for the 54 multifamily dwelling units, 47 spaces are required, but the development is only able to include 43 spaces, which led to just a four-space parking deficit. So they've included that as an exemption as well, just so that they can get the greatest number of units on the lot as possible, since some of these will be affordable. The next one has to do with activity area, which is required for at least 20% of the site. In this case, again, in order just to get the most units on site, especially with the affordable pieces, those requirements won't be met, but the activity area will instead be provided at tract three. That's the market rate multi-dwelling parcel that has the mixed use down there just to the south. And this is discussed a bit further in the sale agreement between the city of Missoula and the new property owners of that parcel at Scott Street Parcel LLC. So there'll still be some nearby, it just won't be directly on site. The fourth exemption discusses the buffer requirements in Title 20, Section 206560, which are required when multi-dwelling residential abuts parcels occupied by detached houses or certain residential zoning. In similar circumstances, lots separated by just an alley right of way aren't considered a budding. That's what it is to the north. It's just kind of that alley. So that generally wouldn't trigger this requirement. However, in this case, with the alley to the north being part of a private townhome exemption development, it doesn't preclude the community land trust property from the buffering requirement. So that being said, the buffering will not be met due to site design, but the neighbors in the Scott Street Village townhomes were included in the master planning process and kind of notified about the general plans at this time. Yeah. So the last exemption is for landscaping in Section 206540, which requires landscaped islands every 135 feet of parking to break up vehicular use areas. This again, won't be met in an effort to provide as much parking as possible to the multifamily units and again, to keep the affordability as high as possible as well. So that is all I have for tonight on the exemptions. I'll also point out the number of folks who have been a part of the project from both the city side as well as representing Rivara are also present here tonight for additional comment and follow-up.
Great.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pocari. And on behalf of the applicant, anyone from Rivara or anyone else from the city wish to make any remarks? You're not obliged, but you're welcome to. Ms. McGee?
Thank you. Dawn McGee from Rivara LLC. I just want to say that we've done this master planning project with the involvement of the community. There was extensive discussion with the development to the north. In fact, we spent a year negotiating an agreement to do a shared alley agreement with them to make sure that that alley is serviced and maintained by the project. We have tried to put as much density into this project while preserving a half acre of open space just across the street to the south, which is how we meet the open space requirements.
Yeah, Matt's freaking out.
I'm sorry, we have someone who's not muted on, on the line. Okay. Thank you, Ms. McGee. Anyone else on behalf of the city side of the project? I think we've, I think we've heard everything thoroughly. So we can, I'm sorry, we'll take, we'll do public comment in just a minute. Anyone else? Mr. Bickel, anything from, from you? Okay. All right. So now we'll open the public hearing. Ms. Pulley?
Probably not too much related to the actual areas that we're discussing, but all these housings, they aren't really addressing the school situation. Where are those, all those people going to go to school? Is it going to go to Lowell? It's already overstaffed or understaffed with lots of population? I just see that all these developments are going on, but I don't see how they're addressing it for the school. Sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else in the room. And anyone online? All right. Seeing none. Questions from council or any comments from council? Ms. West?
I have a handful of questions. The first one, on the first, I guess, exemption, which is related to the entrances, I just wanted to make sure that emergency services has the adequate access needed with the doors not facing right of ways.
I mean, I could answer that. If it wouldn't be approved, the building permits wouldn't go through if that were not the case. So this is more just kind of from a design perspective.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question's related to the parking and which units are going to, I guess, be underparked. All the townhouses have their own parking and the condos will be short a couple of spots. And so I guess my question is related to which units are going to end up being affordable units. I, so I just want to, I guess, ask if only the affordable units are going to be underparked.
So I, I guess I'm not completely sure what their parking plan is, if they have permits or why. I'll let the, I'll let, if maybe somebody from Rivara might know that. So as far as I know, I would assume that it's first come, first served. So it's, it's not just that the affordable units wouldn't be covered, but I'll, I'll let her jump on that.
Ms. McGee?
Yes. So all of the parking, which was shown on the original picture, will be reserved for condominiums.
Final order, Mary Hess. We cannot hear in the virtual part of the meeting the speakers of the lecture.
So the, can you just pull up my curtain a little closer? That'd be great.
Maybe I'm just too short.
Ms. Raybine, is that better?
Little bit better, yes. Thanks.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, so all of those parking spaces will be reserved for the condominium units. The condominium units will either be entirely affordable or there'll be a mix of affordable slash market rate. It depends on lots of things going on right now with the cost of building. But all of those parking spaces will be reserved with a permitted sticker that you must have in order to park in those places, meaning the townhomes won't be able to park those places. The public won't be able to park those spaces. So they'll be four short. Each unit will get a sticker. And if all of the people show up with their sticker and they park, four people are going to be out of luck.
So are all the townhouses market rate?
At this point, we are anticipating that most of the townhouses will be market rate, but we, we're not entirely sure. Basically, what we're trying to do is a blend of a lever, meaning we're trying to get as many affordable units as possible on this site. So to the extent that we could sell a couple of townhomes for, if there's a top dollar, then we can have more townhomes at the under 200 or under 160 or under 120 range. It really depends how the initial sales go, how much of that money at the end of the day can be pushed to make more units available after the capital stack is paid back.
Okay, and I have one more question. Okay, so my last question's related to the activity area. And obviously, the community land trust will share an activity rate area with the market rate parcel. And so my question is, how is that relationship, I guess, memorialized? Is the community land trust going to have a permanent access easement?
Yes, the permanent access, it's approximately half an acre of green open space, which is surrounded by the apartment buildings. I'm pretty sure you've seen the drawings before. I have one on my computer I could show you if you'd like. But there's about a half an acre of open space that will have dedicated easement recorded such that the community land trust has access to that. And we're hoping the whole neighborhood has access to that.
Perfect. Yeah, I just want to make sure if this changes ownership, that people don't lose access, because that would be very sad. Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West. Any additional questions or comments from council? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. McGee. And obviously, there will be more council touchpoints with this, with future approvals, but we'll see that, we'll see this again in the future. So we have no additional public hearings. We do have the committee report from earlier. This is item 5.12 on the consent agenda, and this came out of the Land Use and Planning Committee. And so first of all, I'll go to our, our staff, to Mr. Monroe for any additional information. If you have anything, Troy, that you want to get on, get out there before we go to council discussion?
Hi, yes. Hello. Troy Monroe, City Engineer for Development Review. I do have the slideshow from the Wednesday's meeting. If you would like me to go over that, it does include what the amendment would, would have on it.
Okay, let's, let's just take that if we need it. And any, before we get started, any, any questions from council? Ms. Jones?
Right, so I'm, I've been just chewing on pulling something off the consent agenda to amend it because there was an opportunity to put this on committee report so that the people involved with this would have really known that it was going to be further discussed tonight as opposed to being on the consent agenda. So I'm confused as to why. So I'm confused as to why, if you weren't happy with the result, you didn't put it on a committee reports. Yeah.
Everybody voted yes on this item, so that's why it's on the consent agenda. However, I do want to bring back the amendment because it was a five to four vote. And now we have all 12 of us here.
Mr. Nugent?
So this amendment was voted on in committee and voted down. Can it come back?
Yes. So it is, and I don't recall if it's in our rules. It's certainly been a longstanding practice that an item can get pulled from the consent agenda to committee reports. And that amendment, in my view, is in order. If, well, I'm ruling it in order. And if anyone has a concern about that, there's a process in the rules to take that up. Okay, so we need a main motion first. Mr. Nugent, this came out of your committee, so we need.
The motion's already on the floor.
Well, I need you to make the motion as a function of committee reports, as if it were coming to us.
Well, let me find it. The motion approved out of Land Use and Planning is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the original development agreement with Tolleson Properties LLC for the Lower Miller Creek Road and Old Bitterroot Road Roundabout, withholding the amendment added in Section 1D.
Okay, thank you. So that motion is in order. And discussion on the motion and Mr. Carlini, your amendment would be in order at this time.
Yeah, and it would be great if Troy wanted to share the PowerPoint about it as well. But should I go ahead and propose it now?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so yeah, I'll go ahead and move to amend that we add in the Section 1D that staff gave us in the PowerPoint. I'll pull it up on the screen real quick. So yeah, I moved to amend that we add this new Section 1D back to the developer agreement.
Okay, that motion is in order. Questions or discussion on the motion? Mr. Nugent?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Part of the issue that I have with this amendment is that the developer didn't know about it until the day before it was presented to us at 2:00 in the afternoon. And I think it's reasonable that for something that has been in our side of the House for quite a while, while we've held it so that we could have other committee updates on the larger Miller Creek project, or excuse me, the larger Linda Vista project and all of that, that for that to come at the last second without them really getting to weigh in on it for less than 24 hours. To me, that's not good government. In fact, I think that's bad government. And, you know, I understand why this is getting added in or why the hope was that this would get added in. Because there are going to be future either SIDs or some other mechanism that collects fees there. But as a council, we haven't been presented that to vote on. We don't actually know what those fees are going to be. And it seems like we're kind of grabbing at windmills to protect something. And I understand where it's coming from, but I don't think that it's a fair process for the applicant. And I think that we are always talking about looking for consistency, and this is not that. So I will remain opposed to this. I'm really concerned about the process if it pass.
Thank you. Ms. West?
I am also not going to support this. I just switched notebooks this morning, so I don't have my notes from last week with me. But I, I think that how this would be executed, if it were to be added, is very unclear. I think that was the biggest worry I have for it. And also what I heard from the developer. There are problems with the language as it is. There are multiple permits being pulled here. There are two different parcels being, the building permits are going to be pulled by someone other than the current owner. And even how that 150,000 is being allocated between the two different building permits is unclear. And with the potential future mechanisms to collect fees for this area, it was unclear to me if these two parcels would just be written out of a future SID, if that were the mechanism for this area or if a different path were to go forward. It, yeah, functionally, I think there's a lot of challenges for implementing this. Even though I also understand not wanting to miss out on collecting the per building permit fees that we should collect. I just don't think that this particular amendment gets us where we need to go.
Thank you. Ms. Vasika and then Ms. Jones?
Yeah, thanks. I have to agree with what my previous colleagues have said. When speaking at the meeting last Wednesday, it seemed like we totally pulled a bait and switch. And that's not a good government process. What the developer originally wanted was to, for the city to adhere to the original developer agreement that was signed months ago. And then for us to just have this completely random number out of nowhere that nobody is really sure about what this, where this number came from. I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair. So I would highly recommend my colleagues do not vote for this amendment to be added in.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jones.
I will just say, I actually did vote yes for the amendment last week in committee because I felt like although it was not the best practice to have it added in and to give much notice to the developer, at least we were able to have the discussion on the floor. And the developer had noticed that we were going to have a discussion and the developer was here, as well as folks from the neighborhood. And so I think if people feel strongly enough that they want to add something as an amendment, then they should be voting against that item. And it shouldn't go on the consent agenda. Because the message we give to the community with consent agenda is we're going to, we're going to vote on this, it's a done deal. And we should not be changing it substantively later on. If it's on the consent agenda, that's the whole point of it. So I will be voting against this.
All right, Ms. Anderson?
Thanks so much. Apologies for not being a part of the conversation last week. And this is very sticky. Because originally, when we heard this in committee, y'all voted with me on the amendment to have the developer be responsible for 100% of the roundabout. It has then come to our attention subsequently from the, what? Would you let me finish my sentences? Because I'll get to your point you're about to make.
State your point of order and then we'll.
My point of order is that we continually refer to only part of the condition that was put on. I just think for the public conversation, we need to refer to the entirety of the condition, which was 100% or agreeable.
Okay, so you're crossing into debate, which I think is, I guess, I'd encourage you to just respond to the comment. But Ms. Anderson, back to you?
Yeah, okay. The intent of that amendment was for the developer. And it got squishy at the end because it was 11 o'clock at night when we were doing these. But the intent was to have the developer pay for 100% of the roundabout. Now, I understand, upon further legal review, we have been advised by the city attorney that that would not probably stand up in court. And we are now here with a development agreement to proportionally pay for portions of the roundabout. And it does seem a bit unfair that at a date to be determined in the future, we will figure out how to assess the further properties that fall into this area, as well as the existing homes that live in the area, on who's responsible for paying for what parts of it. And that if these two parcels in one, Phase 1A, get their building permits in before we have that further discussion, they would be exempt from it? And this is where I'm going with my question for the city attorney who I know is listening, is the, if the decision we make for putting some of the costs go to an SID that is boundary specific, these two parcels would be within that boundary and therefore would be assessed just like any current home, correct?
Yes, yeah. So the only thing or approach that we would lose by not including this amendment would be the ability to assess special impact fees or special development fees. And, you know, those are assessed at the time they come in for building permits. So we'd lose the opportunity there. But a special impact district or SID, a special improvement district, sorry. An SID would include all the parcels that we, I think, had presented. I think either Mr. Silver or Mr. Keane had presented at LEP a couple of weeks ago, or Public Works Committee a couple of weeks ago. But yeah, there are a series of properties in that area. Some within riverfront trails and some nearby riverfront trails that are yet to be developed and would be drawn and included within the boundary of an SID. And it wouldn't matter if it was included in this development agreement or not. Those would be assessed, you know, over the period of time that the SID is established for.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. And, you know, this is unfortunately, the order of operations does make this unclear. Because my hope, when we get further down and have the discussion about how we're assessing out the fees for what still needs to be paid for beyond what the developer is now responsible for as a part of this development agreement, that we're able to sort of come up with a compromise solution that allows for some of the new development that has yet to come online to be responsible for some of the portion of this development. And that, you know, some other portions, like sidewalks to the schools, that, you know, the homeowners who currently live in the area, you know, that has been on our radar for quite some time. But that's not what unfortunately, we're discussing here now. And I do agree with the process portions of what Ms. Jones said in regards to, you know, I don't want to miss out on an opportunity to make sure that the developer, you know, pays fairly compared to what their neighbors. But it does feel as though the process that we've got to this right now, to the amendment, without a lot of backstory of the 150, you know, is it proportional? Is it based on square footage? All of those things, it seems very arbitrary. And as much as I want to advocate and fight for the community that I represent and live in, I cannot support this amendment. But I do feel confident that we will be able to make sure that these properties are assessed proportionally as we develop, do the SID and the impact fees moving forward. And we will be having those discussions at dates to be determined in the near future. So thanks.
Mr. Carlini and then Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah, now that Gwen's changed her vote and Stacy let us know that she's not supporting it, that's seven votes against, so I'll just remove the amendment. Move on.
So Mr. Carlini has withdrawn his amendment request. And we're back to the main motion. Any other discussion on the main motion? Seeing none. We can go to public comment. Anyone in the room? Mr. Hunt?
Kevin Hunt, Ward 1. I just like to say generally, this is kind of interesting. Standing here almost exactly three years, I think it is now, from the date that Nick Chakota was sitting in his room. And we had a suddenly scheduled public hearing that even members of the council didn't know what was going on. By the, our late mayor had accelerated this matter from a Monday night to a prior Wednesday afternoon committee meeting at 2:00. And we were dealing with 17 and a half million dollars at that point, which as I've repeated many times, was secured by, secured by bonds, which themselves were secured by other revenue bonds, all of which were secured by nothing but expectations. In other words, we had 17 and a half million dollars basically of junk bonds. And Missoula was setting itself up for a financial disaster. Fortunately, the pandemic occurred when it did. And we didn't have a shovel of dirt turned on that project yet. But it's interesting now that, you know, and that spawned a big public movement. You know, I was the only person who accidentally discovered that rescheduling and raced down here. I was the only public citizen down here. And I spoke against it. And this launched a movement where you had meetings where every meeting, this room was packed. And then the pandemic hit and all of that kind of went away for a while. And now tonight, I just find it ironic that we're hearing all these crocodile tears being cried. And I, I'm a big due process person. That was my, that is my big deal, you know, as a former public defender and all that. But it's just so interesting to me that we're, all this concern is being raised for this developer now over this lack of notice, supposed lack of notice. And, you know, here we were almost three years ago, having this 17 and a half million dollar debacle jammed down our throats when there was virtually zero notice to the public. And so I hope, I hope if there's this newfound sensitivity for due process, I hope that this will be extended to everybody, to the public, to every community, to every neighborhood, not just to a developer. Because when a developer came in here and wanted 17 and a half million dollars on a debacle that would have been a disaster, you know, nobody seemed concerned about it. Nobody, nobody was least concerned. People didn't even know what was going on. They watched the dog and pony show and by golly, they voted for it. So those are just my comments. I think it's very ironic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? All right, seeing none. In the room, online? Mr. Larson?
Matt Larson, Ward 3. Again, it's not a huge sum of money for a developer to put up. It's $150,000. I think it's a, it's a good start for some roundabouts in a community that definitely utilizes them. I don't know. It's a little, it's a good start. I don't know how we're supposed to strap special improvement districts on everything. Some of these things are, you know, the responsibility of the government. But, you know, I just think the implementation of certain special improvement districts might be a good idea. And so, you know, go either way on this one, I guess. But the fact of the matter is, we have to quit strapping things to the advantage of the developer. And thinking, with the wishful thinking that it's going to be savings passed on to the consumer. It's not, it's not that way. So especially when our own city government is telling us that expansion of the city isn't even feasible from the property tax base that we have right now. It costs us more to expand the city than we gain from the new units. So there has to be some sort of compromise, such as Mr. Carlini's amendment that just failed. There has to be. Otherwise, we get other mill leppes, like the one that's going to be announced that's going to fail or that has just been rescinded. So we need, we desperately need more solutions. And we're not seeing those. We're seeing, we're seeing more talk. So I would, I would implore people to get more creative. Thank you.
Mr. Voith?
Thank you, Spencer Voith, Voith Engineering. We appreciate the debate and we appreciate the work the staff has put into this. We still very much agree with the original development agreement without Section 1D. We think it's fair. We think the city still has the opportunity to collect on SIDs that they can put in place on the development as a whole. I think it's been a little frustrating on our end where we feel like we came to the table with open arms. And at the last minute, we felt a little bit blindsided by that amendment. But we still feel like we should pay our fair share of the roundabout, which is in the agreement that we signed and sent. So we appreciate everything. And we are still in full agreement of the original development agreement we signed and sent in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Voith. Any additional public comment? All right, seeing none. Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think that the conversation and the comments are a little bit extreme, quite frankly. The some may be reasonable, but it's poorly thought out. And if we're going to. And if we're going to be considered a good partner for people to work with, consistency is reasonable. And the amendment was so last second that it wasn't even noticed on Monday at council. It was added to the agenda with less than 24 hours. And, you know, to the comment about something that happened three years ago, five of the people at this horseshoe weren't even on council three years ago, including myself. So, I don't think that because somebody did something past, we should hold that to a different standard. I think that if we want to do things like that for the weeks that that agreement was sitting there and had been agreed to by the developer and submitted back to the city and we didn't add anything, that was ample time. Even a week before, it could have been a different conversation, but I just, I think that if we want to be, have any credibility at all as a local government, there are some basic expectations and, and we cannot treat people like, oh, they can just handle everything just because they're the bad guy in some situation or they can handle it. Like, that's not, that is in no way good decorum. That is in no way a reasonable approach to work with a private sector, whether you like them or not. You know, I think that there's a reasonable expectation of fairness and, you know, it should be applied to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. We can have a roll call vote.
On the development agreement, Kontos?
No.
Palmer?
Are we voting on the amendment or the actual?
No, the amendment's been withdrawn, so this is just on the development agreement.
Yes, then.
Yes.
Jordan?
Oh, she's the, she's the one.
Okay, I'll come back to her in case she comes back before we finish the roll call. Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Becerra?
Yes.
Carlinho?
Yes.
And coming back again, Jordan?
Ms. Jordan, this is on the development agreement, item 5.12?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, and that means we have ten yeses and two noes.
And the motion is approved and we can move on to our new business. So, we have one item of new business tonight and this is an item that I am disappointed to have to bring to you tonight. I think it's the right thing to do and we're asking you tonight to approve a resolution that would rescind resolution 8696, which was the resolution you all approved back in, back in July to place an item before the Missoula municipal voters this November to levy up to 34 mills for, in support of our fire department. That was up to $7 million that is needed by the fire department in order to ensure that they continue to be a department that serves our community in the way that we've come to expect them to serve our community. Now, bringing this forward is nothing about the measure. It is nothing about the need. It is nothing about the department and it is everything about the climate that we find ourselves in right now. The state legislature has created an absolutely untenable situation from a property tax standpoint and has created a massive tax shift to residences. And the concern that I have and the concern that the department leadership has, and the reason we're bringing this before you today is that tax bills won't even be mailed out until after ballots are out. So, people will be voting on this measure without knowing what their own tax bills will be. And that feels unfair and disingenuous to ask the voters to make a decision on a levy that they don't have a clear-eyed vision as to what the impacts on their house and their budget and their, their financial situation would be. So, what, what we're doing is, is requesting that you rescind this item from the ballot, that you, that council removed the fire levy from the ballot. And what I'm personally requesting is that you all keep this in mind as a high priority. This remains a need. This remains personally my highest priority and this remains something that I hope that the next council and the next mayor take up. I think it's something that's incredibly important. I just feel like this is not the time. It's not fair to the voters. It is, it is not a good climate to bring a funding, a major funding measure with so much uncertainty on the horizon. What I'd like to do also is take a minute to reassure the public that the fire department response is sound, the department is sound, the department is in good shape and good condition. We do need to address this in the future. We have, our, our community has grown significantly since we last added firefighters almost well over a decade ago. We still have 80 operational firefighters and our community has grown significantly since, since the late 2000s when we last added firefighters when we opened Station 5. We have seen calls for service increase, I believe, 52%. No, I'm sorry, that was the cost of a fire truck, which is also another reason why this levy is important. But we've seen, we've seen calls for service increase by around 50% over the same timeframe since, since 2017 to present. We've seen the cost of fire trucks increase. The work isn't getting any less complicated. It is not getting any easier and it is not getting any cheaper. And at some point, we're going to need to add another fire company and to add a sixth fire station. We do have time. I would encourage the council to bring this back at the soonest reasonable opportunity. And I think that that opportunity could be sometime in 20, in early 2024. We have a window of time. This can go before the voters, anytime before council sets the mills next year and still be available to the department at the same time. So, there's, there's options that exist and I think that there's a good path forward. But we're requesting respectfully that you rescind this measure just out of respect for the, all the uncertainty around taxes right now. Mr. Bickel or Chief Hughes, anything else from you on this? All right, let's go to, so this is new business, so let's go to questions first from council members. Mr. Carlinho?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if, when a ballot initiative gets voted down or something like this, a levy gets voted down, is there rules about how soon you can bring it back onto the ballot?
Not that I'm aware of. Mr. Bickel or Mr. Sudbury?
No, not that I'm aware of either.
Ms. Cheryl? Okay. Ms. Anderson? Okay. Any, any questions? All right, well, let's just go, let's get a motion first, Ms. Jones, and then let's go to discussion.
All right, happy to make the motion, which is to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Missoula, Montana, rescinding resolution 8696 and withdrawing the request to place the fire and emergency services levy on the November 7th, 2023 ballot. And I would like to comment, I'll raise my hand so that I'm in the queue.
Okay, so that motion is in order and first of all, we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back for council comment. If anyone from the public would like to make a comment, you're welcome to come on up or raise your hand online. I have Mr. Larson?
Matt Larson, word three. Thanks. Yeah, I think that this one was a big ask this year for the taxpayers, so I think they do really do appreciate you guys for sending this one or taking this off the ballot. I think in the future, like my email said, maybe something that sunsets and maybe not a, a perpetual mill when we're just building a, a fire station or something like that. I don't know, something a, a smaller ask may have, may have sufficed this year. I, and special improvement districts, maybe in, in areas that are greatly expanding. If we could explore that, maybe that would be a good solution to put on lots that are being developed in those rapidly expanding areas that are going to need more service. I don't know what the solution is, but it's clear that we definitely do need to spend more money, like the mayor says, on this, this, this part of our, our basic service or, or, or public services. So, I would say, as I've often said in the recent past, look to MRA to give more money back into the general fund for some of these items. I think that that's a, that's an easy ask and I think that we aren't doing that enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with public comment? All right, Ms. Davis?
Hi, good evening. Andrea Davis, word three. Thank you. I just wanted to comment that this is a difficult decision on behalf of the mayor's office and the, and the council. I think that the, the need is, is something that's very real, but I do think that you're making a responsible decision on behalf of the taxpayers. Folks are really concerned with their tax bills. You articulated it very well, Mayor Hess, that we won't know what the actual outcome of our property taxes are due to the shift from the other classifications to residential property taxpayers this year. It's, it makes a very difficult decision on behalf of the city. And I also recognize that to previous comments, you know, we have the capital expenditure of the firehouse, but the ongoing cost, of course, is, is labor, you know, is the people that are, are actually providing the service. In addition, this levy was to provide service for the mobile support team. And my understanding is that the FY24 budget does provide for funding through other funding sources, but the ongoing support for the mobile support team is something that as a community, we're going to have to have a conversation about how we're willing to fund that, which is certainly something that I think a number of folks in this room have recognized the benefit of. So, I just support your decision and recognize the difficulty of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Seems that, you know, this is an issue that came quickly for a lot of people, that, you know, that decision was hard to make. And I think this is a great decision to solve something that we're not sure about. In that light, I think that sometimes it's good to rush decisions. And I hope that everyone will refer to the letter that was sent to them by the unhoused neighbors union about the moratorium on sweeps, especially regarding the Thursday, the 21st sweep of Lyons Park again, where we asked for amenities, not action. You know, sometimes we need to push things along, just like sometimes we need to stall.
Anyone else tonight? All right, I will return to our council discussion. I'm sorry, you're welcome to come on up. No, we just, we just do this topic right now, so. So, that was at the beginning of the meeting and you're welcome to visit with us individually after the fact. So, back to our speaker queue, Ms. Cheryl and followed by Ms. Anderson?
Yeah, thanks. I really appreciate the points that Mayor Hess made and that this is a thoughtful kind of reevaluation of what our funding sources may be, when we need to do it. It's a really difficult time for taxpayers and specifically, it's hard to vote on something when you don't really know what your tax burden is. But I, I, so I'm going to be voting to take this off the ballot, but, because I think it's a good idea to pause, but I do want to just, just say that we continue to be committed to public safety and at this council, I, I feel like everyone on this council continues to be committed to public safety and I will look forward to this, I guess, it's really this be, be in the beginning of, of a continuing conversation, Oxymoron, but anyway, of, of how we get to the place that we are funding this appropriately, because there is not, there's no question that there needs to be a way to fund our fire department and to fund more staffing and we will get there, but I'm happy, I'm happy to take a pause, reevaluate, let everyone get their tax bills and figure where, where we go from here.
Ms. Anderson, followed by Ms. Jones?
Thanks so much. I appreciate the comments that have been made by the mayor and Ms. Cheryl. I will be with a heavy heart voting against this. The one question that I have asked every single fire chief who has come before us in the six years that I've been on council was, when was the last time that there was a significant FTE increase to the fire department? And the answer, every single time has been the same and it is 2008. And I think that no one should mistake this action as, you know, us pulling our support for the amazing work that the folks at the Missoula Fire Department do and that we recognize the need that is continually being put upon them and, and they continue to answer the call. This whole situation just sort of felt like it was set up for failure from the beginning when the Department of Revenue Tax Notices went out with a incredible inaccurate number of what people's proposed property taxes may actually have been. And throughout all the conversations that I have been involved in about this levy and the decision to move forward and now the decision to, to pause it, it reminds me of the quote, who I now know how to properly attribute it to, the Mark Twain quote of, "The lie makes it halfway around the world before your, the truth can put its shoes on." And that's really, to me, an excellent example of what's happening right now. People are under, you know, they are frustrated, they are mad, they don't understand all the things that are going into their property taxes, bills, they don't understand why it keeps going up. And we can spend inordinate amounts of time, but when they see an official piece of paper that says, "Hey, your new taxable value is X and we think your property taxes are going to be Y," it is really hard to fight against that message. Now, my hope is that when Missoulians get their bills this October, you know, there will be heartache. There's no way around it, but I'm hoping the majority of people say, "Oh, it wasn't as bad as I was expecting based on what I was told the potential could have been." And we do need to have a much longer in-depth conversation about taxes in this state because it does feel as though like we are constantly being set up for failure and this is an example of that. And, you know, people have been coming to us on council and being like, "I'm tired of listening to you shift the blame to the, you know, whoever. You guys just fix it, just do something." And I want to be like, "With what magical tool do you want us to fix it with?" And, sorry, I'm getting worked up, but I'm just, I am frustrated and then this is sort of the culmination of all of those steps and, and we're made, now being forced to make this really tough choice. I do think the majority of Missoulians support the Missoula Fire Department. They are thankful that when they call 911, a trained professional arrives at their house in a time-saving manner. And that at some point in time, when we go back to them to have this further discussion, when we get through this period of uncertainty around what tax bills are, that they will be open to that conversation because I think it's an incredibly compelling argument. And that it is unfortunate that this is how we have to, as Ms. Jones likes to say, run the railroad and go for, with a levy to continue to provide these basic services because more and more is being asked of us at municipal government with less and less tools being provided. And this is unfortunately, an example of a culmination of all of that coming together and really tough decisions we're having to make. So, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Jones and then Mr. Carlinho?
I don't know that I have much to add after all that, but thanks for the, thanks for the comments so far. I, I will vote yes on this to rescind it for now, but I guess what I wanted to articulate is I think a thoughtful, responsible government is looking down the road, planning for the future and making sure we're in sustainable situations and making sure that we are providing the best services possible to our constituents. And that's what we're trying to do with fire is look down the road. We know we're going to need significantly more funding for fire to ramp up their capacity as Missoula grows. That's what a responsible government does. At the same time, we're in a situation where the tax burden on our constituents is untenable and frankly, we don't have a lot of tools at our disposal to. And frankly, we don't have a lot of tools at our disposal to address that, because we have a responsibility to provide certain levels of services to our constituents. So I think the phrase I used when we did our budget in August was, we're between a rock and a hard place. But we also, if we're going to go down, figure out best funding for the future for fire department, as well as the city, we've got to be thoughtful and intentional, and having as much information available to the voters as possible, so that we don't have wasted conversations, but so that we actually take action as a community to land things in the right place. And I think that's where we're at. So I will, I'll vote to rescind it, but I, these are conversations we're going to be having very soon, because the need is great. We've got a great fire department. But if we're thoughtful and planning for the future, we've got to increase the capacity.
Thank you. Mr. Carlini, followed by Mr. Nugent.
Yeah, with the mobile support team not having annual continual funding, it definitely makes me concerned. And not adding firefighter staff for the past 15 years makes me really concerned. I plan on, you know, trying to allow the voters to, of Missoula, to make the decision here and sticking with my original vote to, to keep it on the ballot. I just think that these services are too important for us to, to wait another year or two to, to just do the, the same proposal off to voters. So I'd rather just let the voters decide this year, rather than just giving, putting it off for another year or two. But yeah, having emergency services arrive on time is life-saving services in Missoula. I think it's one of the most important things that, that we fit into the budget, is making sure that we've got people to respond to our medical emergencies and other emergencies in town. I'd be happy to suggest places to cut to help fit this in. For example, the police department has doubled in the past 13 years, while our fire department has added zero staff during that time. We also, you know, give millions of dollars towards redeveloping banks and hotels and luxury housing. Those could be places to look at, giving that money back to the city, county, and schools instead, so we could fund things like this. But overall, I think giving direct democracy and allowing voters to make the decision is typically a, a good path. So I'd be happy to, to put it on the ballot this time. And no matter what, we're going to have to figure out a way to, to get some more firefighters and expand the service.
Thank you. Mr. Nugent, and then Ms. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to kind of reiterate what, what I think you said eloquently when you introduced this, that leadership at the fire department and in the fire union both feel that this is the right direction to go. And I think that's because they are community members, just like the rest of us, and it is a tough conversation that we're having right now. So I, I will absolutely stand with, with their request and, and vote to pull this off. But I would just echo what some of my colleagues have already said, that the need still exists and it's not going away. And these hard decisions are coming. And, and everybody who points out that the state system is broken are absolutely correct. It absolutely is. And the tools that we have to, to address that and to fund that, as Ms. Jones said, to fund the things that we're required to fund are very small, which means either people convince the state legislature to make a change, or some of the things that we talked about at the budget, those really bad decisions between things we like are coming hard at us. And we talked about it, but I mean, there's $4 million in the budget for, that was funded by ARPA, then, and MRA funds. So in addition to these, if we don't get something on the ballot before the next budget cycle, there's all of that as well. And I think that's, that's just something that as a community, when we're talking about things, we need to make sure that we understand what is at stake here. You know, programs like Mobile Response have made a difference in the community, they have made a difference in people's lives. And, I mean, that is what we, that is what we were talking about. So I'm, I'm happy to stand with, with the fire leadership, the fire union, and everybody who's making this decision, but recognize that we have these needs and they're not going away.
Thank you. Ms. Farmer?
Yeah, thanks. I won't be too repetitive, because I agree with a lot of what has already been said. I, I also plan to vote yes on this, not because I don't think that it is a huge need, but I do think that this resolution was destined for failure from, from the get-go. So I think that, I hope that we all hear and see the need and fight to bring something else forward, whether this is a similar resolution or a special improvement district. But I think that, you know, frankly, we've known that this is a need for several years and, and the solution hasn't come forward until now. So I am going to commit myself to fighting to find a, a better solution for our community and for our first responders. But I will not vote, or I will vote yes for this, to rescind it for now.
Thank you. Any additional council discussion? All right, seeing none, I want to just reiterate that there, there are no operational changes to the fire department that flow out of this. This is, this is delaying the vote on the proposed expansion of the department, or cancelling the vote on that. And I think that's a really important distinction that we need to just continue to reiterate, because this is not, this does not involve cuts to any department, but certainly not our fire department. And I just want to continue to say that, lest the wrong information get out there. Seeing no additional discussion, we can have a roll call vote. Ms. Raybine?
Okay, on the resolution to rescind the ballot measure. I think we start this round with Farmer.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Carlini?
No.
Kontos?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? It's 11 ayes and one nay.
And the motion is approved. We have no additional items of new business. You know, I was going to pass on communications from the mayor until just a moment ago. And I, it occurred to me that I have a limited time with this soapbox, and I probably should talk about property taxes a little more. I, I think, and I, and I specifically waited until after the, the fire measure, because it's unrelated, it's certainly, it's certainly related. But we have seen in 25 years, a shift in our residential property tax, or in, in, in our tax base in Missoula County, from 42% residential to 64% today. That's in 25 years that we've seen a double-digit, you know, 20-plus percent shift of burden from corporations and industry to, to residences. And over the past number of years, as Ms. Jones has talked a lot about property taxes over the last several years, and over the years, as we've talked about property taxes, that has been, the prevailing narrative has been that our property tax system is based on an economy that doesn't exist anymore. It's based on an economy, this, an extractive industry economy. It's based on an economy where we had four mills running multiple shifts a day, and low residential property values, and barely any tourists. We don't, we don't have that economy anymore. And the narrative around property tax reform is, still exists as it did a year ago. We still have a shifted economy. But one of the things that's occurred to me in the past, in the, in the last several weeks, is that there is, there is a new narrative that is more damaging, that is more dangerous, that is more destructive to, to class four properties, which is commercial and, and, and small resident, residential and small commercial properties essentially. And that is this acute burden shift based on the, on the, on the valuations, on the reappraisal cycles. So residential properties in Montana, in Missoula County increased through the reappraisal cycle in value by about 35% on average. And that is unprecedented. And what is also unprecedented is that a year ago, in November of 2022, the legislature received a recommendation from the Department of Revenue that if they wanted to maintain the equalization of property tax payments across the property tax classes in the state of Montana, that they needed to dial back the residential property tax rate from 1.35 to 0.94. They failed to do that. Now, they were either asleep at the switch, or they were acting quietly, maliciously. And, you know, I think it would have been a lot more fair and a lot more reasonable if the Republicans in the legislature had said, the, the old standby narrative of, you know, that the job creators deserve a lower tax rate, and they'll create more jobs, and it'll flow down through the economy to, and, you know, kind of that, that traditional ideological narrative, which they, they didn't stand up and say that. Instead, what they did was quietly fail to act and quietly shift this burden to all of the, the class four property taxpayers around the state. So all these tax classes are going to see decreases, pipelines are going to see a tax decrease. Metal mines are going to see a tax decrease, pollution control, tax decrease. Business equipment, tax decrease. Airlines, railroads, tax decreases. Utilities that cross, that cross county lines, tax decrease. So the residential property tax increases in the city of Missoula are going to pay for a tax decrease to Charter Spectrum. And the only thing that's changed with Charter Spectrum in the last, in the last dozen years, in my estimation, is that they've changed their name three times and they've increased their rates. And so that is what your property taxpayer, or what your property tax increases are paying for, is an increase, or a decrease in taxes for other corporate tax classes. And that is, talk about untenable, that is an untenable situation that the state legislature has created. And with that, we can start our council comments tonight with Ms. Farmer.
I can't follow that up. I'll pass.
Savage?
I'll pass also.
Ms. Basara?
Today is Independence Day in my home country of Chile, and I just want to wish everyone back home happy holidays and to not party too hard.
Mr. Kontos?
Yes. It was pretty interesting. Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, I'd like to give a big shout out to my daughter, who ran the rut last Saturday. And she ran it the year before, that's the 28K. And she came in an hour and 20 minutes faster this time. That's a 7,000 square foot difference from start to top. Yeah, she's, takes after her mom. Anyway, I, I know at the beginning, when we first started here, there were a lot of, or a few comments about traffic and running red lights. And as a lot of you know, I drive anywhere from 350 to 400 miles a week in this town. And just last week alone, I saw three clearly red light runs. They weren't even close. And I thought if I was in the intersection, or if I was the first guy pulling out, it would not have been good. And, you know, as, as a result, we've had a few deaths recently too. I think what I would like to say to all of us who drive, to just take it a little bit slower. There's no rush. Red lights running is not a good thing. And I, I would just hate to see, you know, a child in, in a situation like that. So please, slow down.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
First of all, I want to say, Mayor Hess, thank you for your service, but I'm going to hold my comments until later in November. And I know you'll be working just as hard for the next two months. So we all appreciate how much you've given to the city, and it's, it's, you are truly a public servant. But to circle back to property taxes for just a minute, just can't let this topic go. A lot of folks on council have spent a lot of time studying property taxes and trying to understand why we have such hellish summer budget sessions, because they are, they're bad. And it's a terrible, terrible place to be in, trying to make these decisions when we are insufficiently funded, yet there is such great need in Missoula. And so oftentimes, in this chambers, the phrase "corporate welfare" is tossed around. And I frankly disagree with its application to some of our city programs. But I think on a massive scale, we need to be looking at how the legislature is cutting corporate taxes and shifting that burden onto residential property taxes, as well as small commercial. And if you want to talk about corporate welfare, I think there's a narrative there that people should be paying attention to. This state has a long history of corruption. And that's why we got our 1972 constitution. We have some serious communication problems these days, because our entire communication structure has shifted and changed and is morphing. And people need to be paying attention, because a lot of what the legislature did this last year, I think they, they cut all corporate taxes except solar panels, is my understanding, which was a very punitive scenario. But to be, having those types of levels of tax cuts and passing that on, that cost on to residential and commercial property owners is significant. And I think corporate welfare is a phrase that could be applied to that. So I think we need to start thinking about that.
Ms. Anderson?
Okay, so I promised that we did not coordinate this, but this was literally going to be my comment. So, you know, I said earlier that everyone keeps coming and saying, well, you guys need to do something different. And now I have the numbers to prove it. So I want everybody in their free time to go to taxshiftmt.com, T-A-X-S-H-I-F-T-M-T dot com. And this was a calculator put together by former Department of Revenue Director Dan Buck that literally shows you with your very own eyes, so you don't have to take my word for it, the shift that we all are talking about. So I did this for my own house today, and the numbers from my house are quite startling. So I am anticipated to see a $794.04 increase. Now, I bought my house within the last evaluation, so the full, I haven't fully gotten the whole ramifications. So of that $794 new tax increase, $237.96 is going to the state government. $43.52 is going to local government and schools. $512.57 is tax cuts to other taxpayer classifications, like Mayor Hess was talking about. And then it breaks it down even farther. Of that 512, $700 or $76 goes to commercial property owners. $5.49 go to ag and forest land owners. And $431.06 go to large corporations. So that right there is a, in numbers, real time, everyone can see this for their own house, exactly the narrative we've been trying to highlight to people. This is fundamentally broken. You cannot continue to give breaks to the other classifications and continue to shoulder class four property and small commercial. So everyone can do this for themselves, taxshiftmt.com. It was put together by, it has every county's information in there. It was put together by Dan Buck, so like, a person who actually knows, not a political operative, this is what his job is, he's, you know, can go at length about this. So I encourage everyone to go and then, you know, be informed and put your outrage in the right places. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. I just want to say that I'm looking for, after those comments, Mayor Hess, I'm looking forward to your comments every Monday night. And I, I don't have any more to say, but the one thing about, as we were talking about Dan Buck's there, what MCAT does have the, the recording when they came to City Club, and Dan Buck spoke, I'm sorry, it was in August. It was in August, and he, he did really an exceptional job explaining the tax shift, the burden shift to residential properties. So I just suggest anyone that's interested to take a look at that.
Ms. Jordan?
I'll pass, thanks.
Mr. Carlini?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment real quick on the red lights thing too. The best way to stop people from running red lights, or stop T-bones and head-on collisions, would just be to do roundabouts instead, single lane roundabouts. So, yeah, I'm glad we passed another one of those today, and hope to see more in the future. And then, yeah, in the past, I mean, I saw today that we, you know, voted against increasing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund minimum allocation for, apparently to not increase property taxes anymore. And I just want to remind everybody that we increased, the city council voted to increase property taxes 20% in the past two years. And in the past two years, we only granted the Affordable Housing Trust Fund $350,000. So we're not only increasing property taxes at unprecedented rates, we're also not funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is pretty disappointing. So I hope that we can find better ways to put money towards affordable housing in the future.
Ms. West.
Actually have a request maybe for Ryan. So not really a comment, but I think it would be really useful to have some sort of guidance around what is and is not a substantive change that would require public notice on a Monday night. And yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what that looks like. And I think it could be helpful for future councils. Thanks.
Mr. Nugent. Yeah, you know, I was going to make a different comment until two comments ago, but now I've changed my mind. I think I get really frustrated when people who I think should know better criticize how things are discussed and voted on here. Because nothing is made in a silo. No decision is made in a silo. And the budget process that we just went through, which was brutal and painful and awful, maybe only slightly better than last year because it wasn't three in the morning, included a lot of new spends on things that are really important for the community and really important for housing and things like funding the Johnson Street Shelter for a year. And I want to give credit to Mayor Hess because the political expedient thing to do for him would have been to not do that. But he did it and this council voted for it. And so I do not think it's fair for any council member to sit here and say, nobody around this horseshoe cares or nobody does anything because it's just not true. And I'm inspired because the mayor is being very direct and I like it, even though some of it's been aimed at me. And I just hope that continues. And I think that it, that's a transparent form of government and I think we should keep going on that front. And I am just going to say, I figured Stacy would bring it up, but I had texts, I had the same website pulled up to make sure people talked about it. And it is fascinating and there's no, there's no reason for anybody not to go look at it. And I think the big takeaway from this, when you start to see, see the shifts, is the expenses of local government don't go away. Someone is paying for these things. And that's, that's also true for things that they're cutting at the state that then just get pushed down to us like an unfunded mandate, which is when the state cut money for mental health caseworkers, we saw an increase in mental health issues on our streets. So when things are cut like that at the state level, the need doesn't go away. It just gets shifted to someone else paying for it. And I think the mayor did a very good job tonight of explaining who's paying for it and it's the little guy.
Thank you. Ms. Vesika.
Wow, things took a big turn from when I first was going to comment. So I did want to say happy Independence Day to me, to his home country of Chile. So have fun, everybody. And I do want to go a different direction and say that I, I'm a big fan of tax decreases and capitalism in general. So I'm guessing I'm just one voice here, you know, and that's what democracy is all about. I did want to thank Mayor Hess for making the Constitution Week proclamation. I know that we do have a tainted history, but that's history. History is always tainted, you know, everybody learns from their, hopefully everybody learns from their mistakes. But I think that it's important to recognize that people my age and younger saw a government that they did not agree with and decided to do something about it. So I see the frustration with my neighbors and my constituents and I'm so very happy about all the people that came out tonight to voice their concerns. Whether I agreed with them or not, you need to use this platform and let people, let government, let us know all your frustrations and your thoughts. So please, please continue to do so. Thank you so much for speaking here, my ins at the meeting tonight and have, have a great week.
All right. That concludes our agenda. We have, I'll call attention to our administratively approved agreement report for your nighttime reading. And thank you all for your service. We'll be adjourned.